We're gonna go ahead and get started. There looks like there's still plenty of people coming, but we want to be punctual and start at six. On behalf of Greater Newport Chamber of Commerce, Newport This Week, AARP Rhode Island, involve Newport in the East Bay Media Group and the League of Women Voters of Newport County. We welcome all of our candidates and also offer a warm welcome to those of you in the audience tonight. Thank you for being here. My name is Christine Stinning and I'm the President of the League of Women Voters for Newport County. Before beginning the business that we are here for tonight, I would like to thank the Knights of Columbus for the use of the Columbus Club. We are grateful. So I think there's someone here that we can, will take that back to us. Also in attendance with us tonight is John Martin. He is the representative from AARP of Rhode Island. If everyone would please stand for the pledge. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Thank you. I want everyone to know that the questions that you'll be asked tonight were a compilation of people writing them. We had writers that, from Newport This Week, the Greater Newport Chamber, the AARP of Rhode Island, and the League of Women Voters Newport County. All of us are nonpartisan organizations and we made sure that the questions that you're going to have, in fact, are not partisan. Because that's who we are. Thank you. I'm always the short one. Thanks. My name is Lynn Tungit. I'm the owner, publisher of Newport This Week. And again, thank you to everyone who came tonight to hear the candidates. This is a great turnout. In today's world though, we really kind of wanna reiterate the candidate and audience, I'll even mention, code of conduct. The candidates are asked to respond directly to the question posed. The candidates may not ask questions of each other. All questions must come from the moderator only. The candidates are expected to observe common courtesies during the forum. And we may even have a surprise visitor from the Middletown Police Department to make sure everybody's being, being good. But also regarding questions, we have given out some index cards. So if you have a question or you wanna wait until you've heard what the moderator Erin Donovan Boyle is going to ask, we hope to have time for some questions. So if you need a index card, we have some over at the check-in desk. Or if you've already written one and you want us to grab it, we can do that too. We'll get started now by introducing Erin Donovan Boyle. She is the Executive Director of the Greater Newport Chamber of Commerce. And this is almost your 10th year, almost. So, thank you very much Erin for coming tonight. Thank you.
Good evening. First, I'd like to thank our co-partners for hosting these events. This is the first of a series throughout all of Newport County. We're thrilled to be able to partner and provide this type of information and resource for residents and the broader community. So I'd like to welcome all of the candidates who were able to join us today. And I'll just list the candidates in alphabetical order. We have Leonidas Aramont, Peter, sorry, Amarant. His corrective name tag there too, I apologize. We have Peter Conerton, Lawrence Frank, Brian Hoffman, Christopher Logan, Charles Roberts, Paul Rodriguez, Dennis Torono, Antoine Viveras, Barbara Von Villas, and Thomas Welch. Two of the candidates were unable to join us, but we do have a statement that we'll be able to read on their behalf. So here are a few procedural items that I just wanna read, so everybody is on the same page before we kick off the questions. Member of the League of Women Voters will be timing opening and closing statements and responses to questions. One will operate a stopwatch and the other will display colored cards. A yellow card indicates the speaker has fifteen seconds remaining and a red card indicates time has expired. Each candidate will be allotted ninety seconds for an opening statement, one minute for questions asked, and their ninety-second closing statement. This process of showing yellow and red cards will be the same for the one-minute questions as well. Candidates are to answer the question asked. They may not ask questions, nor should they respond to other candidates' questions or remarks. Candidates in their closing remarks may offer any rebuttal they deem necessary, should they choose to do so. And so now we'll get started. The order of candidates was randomly chosen through a drawing. And so you can see them from right to left, how we will be going down the line for beginning questions, beginning statements, closing statements, and questions. And at this time, we will start with Mr. Conerton and you'll have ninety seconds for your opening statements. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Good evening, everybody. I wanna thank the Middletown voters for electing me to my first term on the Middletown Council. The last, just over two years, I've run quite a bit on the town council, a lot of things I wasn't aware of. My assignments besides being the council having put a little haze onto the committee, which in turn led to my being asked to volunteer in the school building committee. I was also selected to be part of the screening committee for the new school superintendent of schools. I walked with the days of the council to Governor Newport, the Beach Commission, and the Pension and Investment Committee. And I was also selected to be part of the council subsidy on short-term rentals, of which I am the chair. I've had a very busy couple of years and I know my involvements and actions. I've demonstrated my commitment to the town and serving the position of town councillor. I would ask the voters to support my reelection bid this government member and I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Mr. Logan?
Thank you for attending. I'm a lifelong Islander. My success is directly attributed to the people in my experience growing up in Middletown. Middletown's a great place and we need to ensure that it remains that way. My wife Christine and I have been married for over twenty-three years and we have four children. Three of my children have successfully graduated from the town school system. My youngest currently at MHS. I also graduated from MHS and joined the United States Marine Corps shortly after. Upon my honorable discharge, my family and I made our way back to Middletown so we could raise our children and create strong roots in the places we will always call home. I was lucky enough to be appointed to the town council in 2021 after narrowly losing my election bid in 2020. A very humbling experience, but also a lesson that created a fire in me to find a way to serve my community. I have been serving the town for just over three years, which has been both a blessing and a tremendous honor. I want to ensure Middletown remains a destination for both businesses and families. So we need to ensure its affordability and economic vitality through one balancing development needs while preserving our rich history. We have an obligation to build the future for our youth and our seniors. Reaching every child where they are in their educational journey is critical and caring for our seniors is paramount. I will continue to work to preserve the history of Middletown while advancing us into the next phase of our growth. I will use my diverse background and community to explore efficiencies and improve the services our citizens need while making sure we have continued accountability and transparency. I appreciate your support. I'm looking forward to continuing my service to Middletown.
Thank you. Mr. Frank?
The most pressing issue confronting Middletown is affordable housing. When the town council rescinded the public's limits on STRs to encourage long-term rentals, the Amarant, Dennis Torono, and Brian Hoffman, all short-term rental owners, objected. Short-term rentals have damaged Middletown from taxes to education to unaffordable rents to the shredding of our social fabric. The town now loses over five million dollars a year in state aid to education due to short-term rentals. Not content with that, Torono, Amarant, and Hoffman want even more short-term rentals in Middletown. These three are running for town council. As a Middletown councillor, I will work to pass legislation to limit the debt to the STRs. I will work to pass legislation to increase affordable and market-grade housing. I will work to identify properties in Middletown for development and new housing. The town has already made recent strides in this. I will help accelerate that process. Housing affects taxes, employment opportunities, education, new business development, and the quality of life for all of our residents. It is time for the citizens of Middletown, through their vote, to tell the town council what they want the town to look like in the future.
Thank you. Mr. Amarant?
Check one, two. Check one, two.
That one works, right?
Test, test.
Yeah.
Is that okay?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Amarant?
Thank you. As a lifelong Middletown resident, I've spent the last forty-two years probably calling this community my home. From attending Aquinix School, got a MHS in URI, I've grown alongside this town, shaped by its values and the people who call it home. My story is one of gratitude and hope. I'm the son of Greek immigrants who arrived here over forty years, birthed with nothing but the sheriffs on their backs. I was raised on the foundation of the American dream. My parents taught me the importance of hard work, integrity, and giving back to the community that has given us so much. It's these values that I carry with me every day as a Rhode Islander, a devoted husband to my beautiful wife Debbie, and a proud father of three fantastic children. I currently serve on Mid-Old Town's Planning Board and am involved in various local charities, including the McCarthy Scholarship Fund, AHEPA Housing, and the Aquinix Land Trust, and many other causes. I've made it my mission to help our community thrive, whether it's through coaching youth soccer and football or supporting initiatives that strengthen our neighborhoods, my heart is with the people of Middletown. Professionally, I have twenty-five years' experience as a systems and data analyst. And I am a big advocate of data-driven, fact-based decision-making. This campaign represents an opportunity for me to serve all Middletown residents. It's not just about policy and politics. It's about ensuring that this town remains a place where dreams can be realized, where families can grow, and where we all support each other. My platform centers around five key pillars.
Thank you, sir. I apologize. That's ninety seconds.
And small business.
Thank you, sir.
To be glad that we can address these challenges. Thank you.
Ms. Von Villas?
Most of you know that I served as a teacher at Middletown High School. I served on the Middletown School Committee and I now serve on the Middletown Town Council. I chose the word "serve" because those who do what I have chosen to do should regard it as service to the community and commit to making service to all the members of the community their highest priority. As a town councillor, my greatest interest is in ensuring that Middletowners, of all ages, have the ability to reside in their hometown without regard for their challenges or income. I would not deny any Middletowners the opportunity to supplement their incomes as needed. But I do not believe that they should have the ability to do so at the expense of other Middletowners. Some of us are fortunate to have the financial resources that allow widespread choices, while others struggle to make ends meet. But from my perspective, we on the town council have the responsibility to make every effort to ensure that all Middletowners have the option to not only work here, but also to enjoy living in their hometown.
Thank you. Mr. Rodriguez?
Thank you Erin. Thank you for hosting this and thank you for coming tonight. My name is Paul Rodriguez. I'm a lifelong resident of Middletown, sixty-one years. I've spent over a third of my life in community service to the town, whether it be zoning board or on the town council. I've thoroughly enjoyed it. We've got a lot accomplished. My son is, like I said, my family's been rooted here. My son Sammy's a senior in high school. Pretty proud of him. He's gonna be going to New England Tech and doing his senior year there through Vocational School of Rogers. And that brings me to the points why I continue to run with building new schools. I wanna make sure they're on time and on budget. Affordable housing, that was one of our top three issues that the council decided we're gonna work on. We've made some strides there, still a lot to do. And, you know, still trying to keep Middletown as affordable as we can make it. With, you know, the tax rate went up six cents this year for full-time residents. It's the assessments we can't control. So we try and do the best we can with that, but it's just the passion of Middletown. I have no personal agenda. I've never had a personal agenda. I make here, I spend my time away from my family and friends and I do farming. I spend time away from that, just to try and make Middletown a better place. And over the course of the years, I think we've tried to do that, but we make decisions for, not just now, we're making decisions for the future.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Torono?
Thank you Erin. Thank you to everyone for putting this event on. It takes a quarter. We all have an opportunity to speak to the citizens of Middletown. My name, again, is Dennis Torono. I am also a lifetime resident of Middletown. My family's been here for five generations. My father's a teacher in the Middletown school system, very much involved in the community of Middletown. Myself, I graduated from Middletown and I graduated from the University of Rhode Island. I went into the business world and I've been in, I've been in the supply chain technology industry for thirty-five years. So I'd like to bring that to the table in regards to my experiences to help manage this town and some of these larger projects that we have going on at this time. And I wanna thank the citizens of Middletown who voted for me to be, have the privilege of serving, of representing you over the last eight years. And some of the things that I've been able to do, and I think that's what you really should look at, is what people say they're gonna do and what they actually do. My initial getting into the actual running for town council, my number one initiative was tax reform, keeping Middletown affordable. And that's why I'm running again, is that has not been accomplished. That's something that's been at the top of the radar for the council in regards to keeping Middletown affordable. Sometimes we make decisions that don't keep it affordable. So that's further my point.
Thank you, sir.
Very reason for running today.
You've hit your time. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Viveras?
Thank you, everyone. I'd first of all like to thank all that put this program together and all that took the time to attend. My name is Anthony Viveras and I've been a resident of Middletown since nineteen ninety-five. And the taxes were going up in two thousand, I decided to run. And I've run every year for like thirteen elections. This is my fifteenth election. I've been elected three times and in twenty fourteen, I've not been elected in twenty. I chaired the stock committee, which was the Fratonic Toll Opposition Platform. And we fought for two years to get the tolls off the Sartanic Bridge. Those tolls were financially devastating. Be accurate, either just Middletown alone, I understand, but one-third of the big masses was of non-residents. So somebody that used to come to the beach would cost them about twelve dollars and ten dollars and fifty cents additional for that. So I think we ought to do a little of that revenue. And my aim is to give you, the people, an ethical government.
Thank you, sir.
And if they could say in that government.
Thank you. And Mr. Welch?
Thank you. My name is Tom Welch. I am sixty-two years old. I've been a resident of Middletown for all sixty-two years. My wife Cheryl and I raised our four children in a house on Mitchell's Lane that I grew up in and will probably die in. All of our kids went through the Middletown school system. We now have seven grandkids. The two oldest are now in Middletown schools. Three of the four own houses and are Middletown residents. So I have a vested interest in the future of this town. I've been on the council for the upcoming four years now. It has been an incredible learning experience. I think for the most part, we have a pretty cohesive group. We have pretty much the same vision for the town. We've had some great opportunities come our way in the last two years especially. And I've been thankful to be part of those decisions. And that's why I'd like to give it a run for two more years. Thanks for everybody coming. I think this is the best way for citizens to understand and make a informed decision in November. And hopefully when you leave tonight, you will understand where the candidates stand on issues that are important to you. Thanks.
Thank you. And now I will invite Christine to read the opening statement of Mr. Roberts. Dear Middletown voters, If elected, I want to make sure all feel welcome to participate in town government and that transparency is the norm, not a request. I want to tackle our complex housing issues, especially for our senior citizens and young families. It starts with the town center project. We need more affordable housing, not hotels. I want to execute true tax reform that benefit Middletown residents and solve traffic safety issues on a regular basis. I want to support our schools to benefit our students first and our community. We have a new superintendent, new schools on the way, enough of the public fighting. It's time to make Middletown Public Schools the best in the state. Please register to vote and get to know all the candidates for town council. It matters. If you want to know more about me, please visit my website at www.charlieformdl.com. I thank you for your consideration. Respectfully, Charles Charlie R. Roberts. Thank you. And now I will ask Lynn Tungit to read the opening statement for Mr. Brian Hoffman.
Brian is actually much taller. Good evening, everyone. My name is Brian Hoffman. And although I can't be there tonight in person, I'm excited to share my vision for the future of Middletown. As a proud father of two children in our public schools, I am deeply committed to ensuring that our schools thrive. Our children deserve the best education possible and I will work tirelessly to make that a reality. My plan starts with smart tax reform that works for everyone, residents and non-residents alike. I believe in fair taxes that provide relief to residents year-round while ensuring everyone pays their equitable share. Also, let's be clear, city contractors will be held accountable and we will actively pursue state and federal grants to make the most of every dollar. I am also passionate about beaut- I am also passionate about beautifying beaches. Our coastline is a treasure, and by investing in it, we can boost tourism, support local businesses, and preserve our natural beauty. Together, we can build a better, stronger Middletown. Thank you, Brian Hoffman, for office.
Thank you, candidates. Thank you for those opening statements. And now we'll move into the question period of the forum. And just as a reminder, you'll have one minute for questions. And I will start with Mr. Logan. The first question is, what do you see as the biggest challenge that Middletown residents face, and how do you plan to tackle it? And we will just go right down the line in order, after Mr. Logan, ending with Mr. Connerton. Certainly, what do you see as the biggest challenge that Middletown residents face, and how do you plan to tackle it?
There's no shortage of issues that we face. I think one of the things we have to keep in mind is the affordability factor. It is almost impossible for a family to move into this town. Housing prices have skyrocketed now. Some will say that has a lot to do with a single factor. It's not true. It's many factors, right? Inflation is outpacing wages. The market is demanding much higher, because we live in a destination everybody wants to come to. So making sure that, one, we stay on top of the affordability issue for housing is going to be critical to continue to drive families into this community. I would say, and other things that we should pay attention to, is that revenues. The town of Middletown is driven by taxes. That's how we pay for things. We need to find a diverse way to create new revenue streams, right? Really through things like the beach, fees, other services that we can provide, right? And how that bleeds into supporting our seniors, not just affordable housing, but also the service lines they can be, and continue to meet the children where they are in their educational journey.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Frank?
My amendment would be, coming up, the planning of the housing. Housing is key to our discussions about how to solve some economic issues in Middletown. Vacancy rates generally thought of as just vacant houses waiting to be rented. They're up there more than that. Vacancy rates are becoming very high. Short-term rentals and second homes, as such, vacancy rates are very high in Middletown. Let me quote from the report. "A high vacancy rate of 78% or greater is an indicator of growing number of seasonal second-hand MIBs." Middletown's vacancy rate was 12.8%, 60% higher than when it should be. Housing supplies have been reduced, rent for long-term renters have risen. We're expecting over, we're expecting hundreds of families to be coming to Middletown with Navy, Coast Guard, NOAA, the military. 12.8% vacancy rate.
Sir, that's one minute. Thank you. Mr. Amarant? Certainly. What do you see as the biggest challenge that Middletown residents face, and how do you plan to tackle it?